So, good evening, once again, everyone. Welcome to tonight's work session for Monday, July 12th. We will now call the meeting to order. Per our agenda, the first item up tonight is the approval of the agenda. And I will call for the question, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw move.
Moved by Councilmember Rout, is there a second? Help me out, Vito.
Chris, you can do it. One second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mendoza. Any discussion?
Yes, there is discussion.
Councilmember Rout.
Yes, Mayor James. I would like to, I would like to recommend that there are two things that need to be added onto the work session agenda. The first thing is, needs to be non-voters, a non-voter. We have two guests here for the non-voter item in addition to rules of procedure, draft rules of procedure. So, I would like to request that the council amend. I move to amend the motion on the floor to add for two items under new business, no, one item under old business draft, I'm sorry, rules of procedure moved up to item A and under new business, add item A as well, non-voter, not, non-citizen voting. My apologies.
And just to clarify, that item is on the agenda. It's noted as non-citizen voting? Or are you speaking of something different? Because that is for our guest who is waiting to present this evening?
Yes, I'm requesting that that is added to A. That, that is amended under new business under A because we have guests?
So, Mayor, procedurally, if I could just say, given that there are guests, as a courtesy to the guests, we can have them jump the queue completely and move right up to the beginning of the agenda.
Agreed. So, actually, I definitely agree. And I feel like they should, we don't want them to wait because going through old business is going to take us some time. So, do you want to just let them go first and then we can proceed on with the agenda? I'm looking at our Councilmember, blank, Councilmember Rout and Councilmember Lundie, just out of respect for our guest time.
Yes, that's correct. That, I, I would be fine with that, Mayor James. I would also like to still put under old business, item A, rules of-
Correct, we have it.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. All right, I'll now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Councilmember Lundie to introduce our guest for tonight that is coming on the meeting to talk about non-citizen voting. This is under town election, so Councilmember Lundie?
Yes, thank you. I'm Madam Mayor, thank you so much. And so, yes, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce this to the mayor and council, non-citizen voting in for the town of Bladensburg, not in this particular election for 2021, but as we move forward. This is something that I hope the council will consider having. And so, I first would like to introduce Mr. Trent Leon Leverman and then also acknowledge and introduce after he has any remarks, Selena Menendez, our new mayor in the town of Mount Rainier. So, congratulations to you, new mayor. But, Mr. Trent, can you go and give some opening remarks, please, for our mayor and council and our guests? And, and good evening to our guests and our town staff as well as my colleagues, mayor and council. Thank you. I, it's in your hands.
I appreciate you, Councilmember and Mayor and all of the council members from Bladensburg. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I'm so grateful to be here with Mayor Benitez from Mount Rainier, who really drove this in Mount Rainier. And as you can see now, having become mayor, she's been very popular there and she's done such good things. So, I really appreciate you, Mayor Benitez. And so, to speak about non-citizen voting, this is an initiative that the towns of Riverdale Park, the city, the city of Hyattsville, the cities of Mount Rainier, and most recently, the city of Chevrolet have all passed. And it gives immigrants who are taxpaying and have lived in the community, many of them for decades, many of them for years, the opportunity to vote and to register to vote. And, you know, there's a lot, there's going to be the opportunity to have a lot of discussion around this. And I work for CASA and we work with the immigrant community across the county and state. And we have just seen this as such an opportunity for individuals and members to be involved. And, you know, when, when we go to someone's door and we say, you know, you can register to vote in this town as a, you know, if you meet the qualifications as a resident of the city, and the, the expressions are priceless. People are so happy, you know, many of them having lived in the city for, as I was saying, years and decades and not have had the opportunity. You know, that, when I say immigrant, I talk about across the spectrum, meaning so many of them are, are green card holders, permanent residents. Many of them are dreamers, meaning they were brought here before they were, you know, a year old and they only know this town and, and this city and this country. But because of the way our federal immigration system is set up, they have not had the opportunity to become a citizen, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have the opportunity, having lived in the town of Bladensburg or, and all these other cities, they shouldn't have the opportunity to be a, you know, a conscientious person and, and participate in the city. So, I'm, I'm so happy to be here. I'm ready to answer any questions or fears or nervousness that people might have around passing an initiative like this. But I just so appreciate Councilmember Lundie in reaching out and driving this as making it a possibility in the city of Bladensburg and really embracing the immigrant community and bringing so many of our brothers and sisters to participate in this process and make Bladensburg an even better city than it already is.
Oh, thank you so much, Trent. Mayor, Selena?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council staff as well as the community residents. It is an honor to be here with you guys. And thank you, Councilmember Lundie, for putting this in the agenda. I think the, the more representation there is in our community, the more we show the leadership we have as elected officials, but also the city. And I think of the heart of like Mount Rainier, just like Bladensburg, it is the community and make sure they're represented. I think a lot of us have worked many years on it. And I see this as much as the case of many of you guys sitting in front. So, to your least in my case, presidential voting has been a part of my reading of history since 2017. We had three elections under our belt, the recent one in May of this year, all of them very successful, all of them very inclusive. And this allows for our immigrant community, whether it's African, Asian, European, or Latinos, to be accounted for. You'd be surprised how many of them are still in the shadows and you probably don't even know who they are until you go to this process and they go, I feel represented out, I get to speak up and let you know where we're at. For us, that's also improved when it comes to the relationships with police department because now the residents know that they could go ahead and reach out at the town, like, you know, speaks up and talks and, you know, is, is there for them. So, it's a lot for their relationships even with PD to improve because now they could call and they know, like, making the call, they're able to attend and they don't not feel like, you know, they're, they're a bother, they'll be ignored because they're, you know, part of the invisible community of our cities. What I've seen also is a lot of growth when it comes to involvement. Some of them that have been involved in the PTOs, their homeowners, business owners, employees, or even renters now feel accounted for. So, for me, it has allowed for reflect who we are as the community and inclusive community, a welcome community and work that works really hard to make sure the voices of those that have no voices are accounted for. And we have been able to do that in so many ways through our history. So, this is another staple to make sure another group is also involved. So, for me, I will say, any questions, any help, any, anything you'd like to ask, I'm here to help us to restore. And please count on me and also I need our staff to basically help along the way and what has been our experience as well. Then, I'm pretty sure the elected officials in the other cities call to speak very highly of the process. And I would like to say, thank you for putting this. And please, any questions, I'm here, as an open book, if you guys have anyone you guys need your help.
Thank you. Mayor James, I believe Councilmember Rout had a question.
For Lundie for opening up the conversation on this and for inviting today's guests to share their perspectives on non-resident voting. At this time, I will open the floor up to questions from the council and understand Councilmember Rout has a question. And then I'll come back, I have some as well.
Thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, Councilwoman Lundie, for inviting a representative of CASA to come and talk about the benefits of this non-citizen voting as it relates to being inclusive. Thank you, Mayor Benitez, for coming just to speak about your perspective as it relates to being a mayor for a municipality that is comparable in size and in our immediate jurisdiction as your experience with this non-citizen voting. When the agenda went out to members of the public, Ward 1 council members by who I represent, they have sent some correspondence and questions to me that I would like to ask you, Mr. Leon Leverman and Ms. Benitez, tonight. Residents are concerned that possible terrorists, criminals and communist country, members from communist countries will be able to vote against our town. How do we identify or protect the best interest of our town? Is there a specific, what are the specific requirements? Do you have to be a green card holder? You have to be a taxpayer? How long do you have to be a resident of? Can you go into just what it means? And is a second question, is their local status only able to allow them to vote in local elections? Or will it allow for them to vote in a county and federal and state elections? Thank you so much.
Mayor Benitez, do you want me to start or do you want to start?
You could start, go ahead.
Okay. So, what I, what I'll say is that, you know, in each city, they have passed a different resolution, right? They all, many of them are similar, but, you know, what you all do in Bladensburg is up to you. And what I would say is that at CASA, we're always trying to prevent othering, right? Like, we don't want to say that this is another, and so, but, but, you know, to answer that caller's question, of course, you could put, if someone is on a terrorist watch list, then they would never be eligible. But I would also say that if they were on a terrorist watch list, they would probably be, you know, in jail, they probably wouldn't be able to vote. But, um, yes, absolutely. So, you know, in some of the cities, they have same-day voter registration and then have non-citizen voting. In other cities, they don't have same-day registration and then people have to, you know, register ahead of time. To answer your question in terms of, yes, it would only be eligible for the local election. It wouldn't be eligible even for the county election or the statewide election or the federal election. It would just be for the town of Bladensburg. So, and, you know, you guys, look, I would say, from our perspective at CASA, we don't, there, there are so many classes of immigrants, as you're saying, right? There are permanent residents. But are they really more of a Bladensburg resident than someone who was a dreamer, who came to that city before they were two years old? But just the way that our federal immigration system is set up, they haven't been able to become a citizen or get their green card? And that's what I will say, all of these, all, I have never, ever met someone that didn't want to be a citizen. It's that the federal immigration system has not allowed them to, not because they've committed crimes, not because they haven't been an outstanding citizen, but just because of how the federal immigration system limits people's possibility to become citizens. So, this is just opening it up. We believe that it actually gets people more engaged in the community. We've seen it, as Mayor Benitez was saying, working with the police as an example. Thank you so much.
So, yeah, definitely. So, I want to make sure, you know, it's also not transferable. So, if they sign up to vote in Bladensburg and let's say someday they move to Mount Rainier vice versa, they will have to go through the whole entire process in the other cities. So, it applies just to your city, not counting a state, not presidencies, just for mayor and council. That's the limitations of it. When it comes to people registering, it's up to you to decide what to do, the same-day registration, that's something that we're looking forward to. At least for us, it has the same registration requirements. Most of them is for being a US citizen, so when it comes to our other residents, when it comes to like them have to like register 30 days minimum before the election. So, we tie it like that so that when we take our roster out, it, it makes life a little bit easier for the board of election and for us. But we're looking forward to seeing same-day registration. And when it comes to the other things, as you said, it's like, at least like for us, we know exactly who this, who this residents are. Most of them are longstanding residents in our communities. So, they're active members of your community who usually come out. And the first year might be a few people and then it'll stop a little bit at a time as they see like, you know, that you are standing behind them and you are respecting their right to vote. And that's very important, but it definitely hasn't been a concern for us, even, you know, seeing it the third round or even talking to other municipalities that have had it even longer than we have.
With that information, and we, again, appreciate you all coming out tonight for this time because we do have a robust agenda. It would be helpful, Mayor, if you all could just send us some data so that we can make an informed decision based off of actual metric points to let us see what the progression has been in terms of the increase in voter turnout from when you first began until where you are now. So, if you could just share that via email with our team, that would be really helpful for us as we continue this dialogue. But thank you both for being here and a part of tonight's meeting.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll move forward in the agenda to agenda item, the new number, letter A, which is our draft rules of procedure. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Rout, or actually, I'm sorry, before I do that, Town Administrator McGory, did you want to say anything to just set this up before we get into discussion? Because I think there were emails about this earlier today.
Well, the, the only thing I'll add is that I, I had put Resolution 042020 on the agenda at the leadoff position specifically to talk about the authority to conduct meetings during the pandemic and that the state of emergency declared by the governor was nested into that resolution, which then provided the enabling legislation for several specific things, including deferring permits and permit deadlines and extending the expiration date of permits, among other things. But it also specifically gave the town administrator the authority to do other things that are needed and consistent with the intent of the resolution. And so, my understanding is that was, one of those things was to waive the council requirement in the council's rules of procedure that specify that councils must vote in, at the council dais in the council chamber. And so, I've construed that authority through to the present. And again, bearing in mind that I'm new here and I don't actually have the handoff of all the details on that authority, but that seems the most logical to me, absent an amendment to the rules of which I am unaware. So, the discussion of the rules is entirely germane at this point in the agenda anyway, so I'll just leave it at that.
Great, thank you, Mr. McGory. Again, I know there were some emails back and forth and just thought it might be helpful for everyone watching to understand the purpose of this discussion item. Councilmember Rout, I'm coming back over to you again as you made this agenda amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. When the meeting agenda for this particular set of meetings and work session was emailed out to the council late Friday evening, it was understood that we would be meeting in person. There was a, a concern by, by the consensus of the council, the council members that are not in person, of the health and safety of town council members, their family, other Bladensburg residents, as it relates to the public health emergency. The council drafted some rules of procedure back in 2019 that were all agreed upon by the town council that does not include rules for virtual meetings and/or there is a, a section in the rules of procedure that calls for roll call and attendance. If I can get permission to please share my screen, I would like to share the draft language that I am suggesting tonight. It's two sections. May I please have the opportunity to share my screen? Thank you so much. I will be sharing screen too. I converted the rules of procedure document that was emailed by Mr. McGory into a Word document. And there are two sections, as I stated, 2.10, roll call in attendance. Now, this general language was already in this document. And if you see, we did not take roll call today, which was not for our rules of procedure. We're not following them, but we should be. In addition, it's C, it says that, or C says that members must be physically present at the council chamber dais to vote. Proxy or absentee voting is not permitted. Now, that was the language that was in the original document. And what we are recommending, what I am recommending today, and hopefully I can get the support of members of the council, to amend this section and to strike physically at presence at the council chamber dais, strike and at in-person or virtual meeting to vote. And the reason for that is to, we don't know what is going to take place. Today, it was very anxiety provoking and at the last meeting that it was suggested by the town administrator that we should be meeting in person. Given the health and safety and wellness of our town set, we have, we have a duty to ensure good governance of our town based on our charter. And it is, that language is in our charter and I'm going to close with that language. But I also want to go down to a section that I'm adding as it relates to virtual meetings. This sole section and purpose was added. This is talking about rules for virtual meetings. It explains what a virtual meeting is. A virtual meeting is a meeting of the town council held by remote access and where remote attendance by members of the council is by way of video and telephone conferencing. Members of the council will attend virtual meetings through a teleconference facility such as Zoom or Webex as determined in writing by the town administrator. Virtual meetings will be live webcasts and broadcast on YouTube. The press and members of the public will be able to access virtual meetings through the live webcast. Links to meetings will be available through the council website and social media platforms. The public will not be allowed to live chat on the social media platform in our teleconferencing facility during the town council meeting. Virtual council participation, council members may request the floor by using the raised hand function in the teleconference facility or by a show of hand during the council meeting. Public participation, generally, members of the public will be able to participate in all virtual meetings in the following ways. A, public statements, questions and petitions can be submitted in advance of the meeting and we will be read at the council meeting. B, public statements will be made available to all members of the virtual meeting. However, members of the public will not be allowed to present their statement in the virtual meeting. C, public questions will receive a written response. No supplementary questions will be permitted. Virtual voting, voting at all virtual meetings shall take place through the teleconferencing facility within the video conference or by a show of hands or by a roll call during the council meeting. These are the only additions that I am requesting at this time. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And the purpose of these is because we don't know how long the pandemic is going to be taking place. There was a misinterpretation of a governor's order, which would mean that members of the town council, residents of the town of Bladensburg, their safety would have been compromised as it relates to meeting tonight. And we have been operating using virtual meetings. We don't know what the future is going to be held or hold. In addition, because there may be an extension of our public health emergency, we have various variants that are coming out, which place people at risk. We have to remember that children under the age of 12 are not presently able to access the vaccine and they are exposed to potential carriers who may or may not be mask wearers. And that, to me, we have to be able to protect our most vulnerable residents, who include our children and our individuals who may not have access or be able to access the vaccine. I am in favor of vaccines, but I do understand that vaccines are not available to all because of pre-existing conditions, because of conditions that do not fit well with vaccinations. And because of that, we have to make sure that we are protecting the health, wellness and safety of all. I want to be able to quote our charter in closing. If you bear with me, I will pull it up. Thank you so much, your indulgence. In section 104 of our town charter, general and express powers, which is what the town council is able to do, it talks about what that's, what the town council is responsible for doing. And section A is assure the government of the town. B, protect the, protect and preserve the town's rights, property and privileges. C, preserve peace and good order and suppress and abate nuisances. D, secure persons and property for danger and destruction. And E, the most important, that is the basis and the foundation of this draft to, which is E, protect the health, comfort and convenience of the residents of the town. I am a town of Bladensburg resident. I am at, I am a high-risk person and I do have children who are high-risk as well. I interact with town residents and Ward 1 when they call up on me. And if I was to contract the virus from a non-masked person and be, not have any type of symptom, not knowing that I could potentially pass, we have to be cognizant and we have to be able to use our tools such as virtual meetings that we have access to. And I think these are fair and reasonable. And I ask for the town council to participate in the, the works, the, the council meeting, where I will be moving forth to bring forth a resolution to ask for the support of these two amendments. I yield back, thank you.
So much, Councilmember Rout. So, just to take a step back. For this proposal from Councilmember Rout, and I'm just going to kick off the discussion, appreciate the concerns that you've outlined, but also understand that per our governor, who we do follow his rules that he pulled back as of July 1st, many of the mandates and emergency orders that were put in place for the pandemic. And so, I do want to call out that, that took effect July 1st, thereby giving other agencies, government entities, the ability to begin opening up and begin working back toward full capacity, not jumping immediately into it. As it relates to the town council meetings, just so the public is aware, what we discussed also was that the only folks in the room would be essential staff. So, essential being our town administrator, our town treasurer and our chief of police in addition to the council. So, not, and I'm sorry, in our production person in the studio, in addition to the five of us keeping the numbers down. And we've made provisions when we have met here at the council meeting by adding an additional table in the front so we can social distance and also allowing those who are comfortable to, you know, keep the mask on. Again, as Councilmember Rout said, they've been vaccinated and so forth, but for comfort levels being inside, we respect, everyone's situation is different. We do not presume to think every Marylander has been vaccinated. But the reality is, we've began as a town to open up. We have called our staff back. And so, we need to be thoughtful and lead by example. And if we tell our staff that you, Mr. Police Officer or Mr. Code Enforcement Officer have been vaccinated and you need to go out and do your job and interact with the public, I think we need to be careful about saying, we cannot come into a room with limited numbers for a few hours once a month. We have to be careful about that. We understand- We understand all the health reasons that Councilmember Routh laid out there. But again, I think we're sending a strong message that we're telling our team to do one thing that we're not leading and demonstrating ourselves. But I want to open it up, Councilmember Mendoza, and get your, your input. And then I'll go to Councilmember Blunt and Councilmember Lundey.
Well, I work in the county and we're moving towards having everybody back. Like the town administrator said that the governor issued the order on licensing. Well, ours are about to expires in August. So right now, the county exec didn't want us to bring people in the building, but they did allow us to have them in the lobby. So every day we go and we meet people in the lobby. And because, you know, the system's got to get back to, to normal according to what the governor, the president, everybody else. And if we just try to hold back, it's just making the matters. I don't know, like, we're trying to get back to normal. I mean, and I'm doing my part for the county, so I figured we could do the same thing for the town.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Blunt, I want to come over to you and give you the opportunity to weigh in, to weigh in.
Can you hear me now? I understand what everybody and how everyone feel about, about the situation. So, I mean, me personally, I have not been vaccinated. I've never had COVID. And I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable. I mean, at the same time, do I go out? Yes. Do I wear my mask every day on my job? Yes, I do. And also, I do remember, um, one of the youth were trying to get hired at Bladensburg to come in to work at Bladensburg, but because through COVID, you all decided not to allow her to come in because, because of COVID. We had a conversation, so. I mean, I don't know how anyone else, one else feel, but I have not. And at the end of the day, I also said back two months ago, we have a lot of municipality who's still doing virtual meetings. Why couldn't we have started back up in September, once we really know what's going on with the new viruses? With this, because you all feel some way, we feel some way, it's, it's like we're not taking anything from anybody. We're just, I mean, I feel the way I feel of not coming in and I didn't want to come back until September. So at the end of the day, you know, I'm, all the bickering, that's what's happening on the power structure, that was happening. But to allow one more month or do after recess, come back in, I don't see where that would have been a problem. It's just power, power and structure was going on right now. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt, for sharing your perspectives. Councilmember Lundey?
Yes. This, you know, this, this has really been hard and I, and I do agree that with both sides, there is a concern. And for me personally, um, you know, I, as you all know, I have, I have challenges my own self and then also my, my spouse has challenges also around my grandchildren. And with this new variance coming out or that's out already, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm not trying to take anything away from the staff, not trying to send any missed messages, but I'm, I'm a resident too. I am a council member, but I'm also a resident and I do have to take that in concern. People come in and out of the, people are coming in and out of our building. And I don't, I know we have clean, you know, the building is being cleaned and all of that and everything, but I don't want us to have a power struggle either. I don't want us to be like that. So if we could, if we want to come and do the virtual meeting, we should be allowed to do the virtual meeting. If we want to meet in person, we should be allowed to meet in person. Either way, I'm going to wear my mask, I've, you know, because people are not required to show that they've been vaccinated. And even if you've been vaccinated, you still can contract the virus and give it to someone who hasn't. And I did get sick in March, but I never got tested. I don't want to go through that again. And it was horrible, horrible. And some of you all helped me out a whole lot during that time. And, and we know of some, some mayors who have contracted it. We know of other people who have contracted it and they have all, most of them say, I don't want to experience that again. And so I don't, why should we take a chance? And, and just, just for the sake of saying we could do it, just do it without being prudent. So I see the mayor's handshake up there. So, so it's like, I mean, let's just be, just considerate and if we, if we want to have in person, come in person, we want to wear the mask, allow people to wear the mask, but I'm not trying to take any away from the staff, not trying to show no missed messages. I'm just trying to protect, do the best I can to protect me, myself, my family and the residents here. So that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lundey. So I appreciate everyone going around and sharing your perspectives. And so we'll put that to vote in the council meeting. It's not really financial, so we could do it now technically, but Mr., I'm just consulting with the TA, Mr. Magory. Yes, we'd love to.
Mayor James, before Mr. Magory goes, I would like to, I would, I would like to respond.
Make note of a couple things. One, just some, some background information on this. So the issue of power was raised and I think that's the appropriate question to ask. This was not about power, this was about the lack of power. And frankly, it's the council's job to set its rules of procedure. And my perception was that with the expiration of the state of emergency, that the power to set the council's rules again resided with the power, with the council and no longer with the town administrator as of July 1st. Can you call up that website, the governor's recovery website? So with that assumption, what appears on the governor's webpage is the statement in bold, "End of State of Emergency." And so if I misinterpreted and the town attorney had a different opinion based on a nuanced reading of the specific language of the governor's emergency declaration or most recent declaration, and that is why you have a town attorney. But I, in good faith, made assumptions about the town administrator's lack of power to impose rules or waive rules that had been previously set by the council. So it was really out of respect for the council's power to set its own rules. So I just wanted to make that observation. There were comments about waiting until September and I have no problem doing that. Now that the town attorney has weighed in saying that the town administrator does have the authority to do what is going to make people most comfortable, to waive the council retire requirement that the council must be at the dais in order to vote. That this present town attorney has no problem doing so to facilitate an environment of comfort for everyone, but that would still leave that authority contingent on the governor's declaration of a state of emergency and the town attorney's opinion of that declaration. And then just a final clarification, that with the issue of the person being hired, I will just note that the person being hired would not have been a town employee. And so at present, we are continuing to stand with the notion that persons allowed in town hall are employed by the town, members of the council who also are paid by the town and contractors who are paid by the town. And I'm continuing to try and enforce those rules. Lastly, I'll add, I appreciate the close reading of the council's rules. It also includes specific guidance on how they can and should be amended, which I would urge the council to familiarize themselves with. And lastly, the point about roll call is well taken. Normally, you would have a town clerk and the town clerk would be responsible for the orchestrations of the council meeting. That's an item that's also on the agenda, is designating someone for that. And so with that, I hope we will turn back to the meeting and accommodate the roll call. And every vote taken by the council also should be done by roll call vote. I was going to propose that the, given the facility of Zoom, that we could see the thumbs up from the council members, either visually verify or use the thumbs up feature, and I could count the votes that way with the assistance of the chief, since he's looking over my shoulder to see the council up here on the large screen. So if that would accommodate the requirement for roll call voting, I think that could, could be a technical way that we could adapt to this, this new environment of a hybrid meeting. So with that, I'll close my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one additional note, Mr. Magory, that I wanted to share. When we did have a clerk, typically they would wait the 20 minutes, that buffer window before doing roll call in case someone was coming in late from work, just as a courtesy or if you had a call and you were running late, give that 20-minute window before calling the roll. And so I think that's fair because you all have daytime jobs and it could just be something simple that you don't anticipate coming up, but it could just take you, you know, 10 minutes past 5:30 and I feel like we owe each other that kind of courtesy because things happen. You have family emergencies and the like. So if we could get back to that practice as well, I think that was really helpful, just that 20-minute window, doing it at that point, because after 20 minutes, then the assumption was you were absent. So with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote we've had, or I'm sorry, the motion was being raised by Councilmember Routh. Is there a second? Edits to the rules of procedure for the council presented by Councilmember Routh.
Second.
I didn't hear what you made and.
Do you want to go ahead, Councilmember, make a formal motion?
Council's rules would not permit the rules to be amended by that. So there's a specific process outlined in the rules.
And Mr. Magory, could you please come back to the microphone? Just, I want to make sure everyone can hear that. So talk us through what the process and the timeline should be for any rules changes for the council rules of procedures. And I just want to call out, it's 6:25 and we've only covered about three things on this agenda, so we do need to try to move forward.
Well, to the, to the specifics of the proposed change to the rules, first of all, it would be covered by section five of the rules, which talk about suspension of the rules, which is one option for, for dealing with this matter. And also enforcement of rules and procedures. And I'm sorry, my Zoom connection seems to be failing here because I've lost internet connection. There we go. Not that I need to be on screen as long as the microphone's working, but it's just distracting seeing the wheels spinning around. So section five talks about suspension of the rules and it articulates a process that says, "For the purpose of this section, preliminary approval shall mean a motion and second with a majority vote to preliminarily approve the amendment." That's one, that's the end game. But it also says, "Any provision of these rules not governed by federal state law or the town charter may be temporarily suspended by a supermajority vote of the council." That would be four votes. "And may be amended in a similar fashion if such amendment was introduced at the previous regular meeting of the town council and shall have received preliminary approval of the town council at such meeting. For the purpose of this section, preliminary approval shall mean a motion and a second with a majority vote to preliminarily approve the amendment." So without having had a chance to read the amendment, I would say as a, as a courtesy to the entire council that it may be seeing this for the first time on a screen, it would probably behoove the council to have that circulated among the council members, have that circulated to the town attorney for legal review and then go through this process of suspending the rules. And again, I, whatever the council's rules are, the council's rules can be, but I'm happy to accommodate, again, having been delegated that authority through the town attorney's interpretation of the state of emergency, I'm happy to accommodate the, the clear wishes of the members of the council who don't wish to meet physically in the interim during the state of emergency. So I think that would be a way to accommodate consideration of the rules during the deliberative process that's outlined here and allow the council members to have their, have their way on this.
Agree. I think that is fair and I think it was Councilmember Lundey who also said that, allow people to do what they are comfortable with. And I, I think that's right. You know, it's, we're not trying to make someone look like they're making a power play, it's just what is comfortable, what seems right as we continue to move forward. And one final comment from Councilmember Routh before we move forward.
Thank you, Mayor James. And I have two comments. One, the amendment of rules, the, the written, I too familiarized myself with the town attorney today in speaking with her as it relates to how to amend, and it does not say how to amend, it only says to suspend. And so we, she did, Attorney Ferguson did encourage me that these are the council's rules and the council can set them. And I'm only asking to amend, which is to add language. And secondly, I would like to also let my, my council members know that this action does not preclude anything from the governor. It is, I felt that my statement was misinterpreted. This only adds a provision to meet virtually if we need to, and it establishes rules for a virtual meeting if we need to. I do think that we need these rules. I have read them. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like we had any edits to the suggested items. And so I would like to move forward tonight because we are still in a state of emergency as interpreted by our legal counsel that was shared. And this was also shared in writing with all of the rest of the last minute correspondence that was sent out for today's meetings. Thank you so much. So I would like to move forward with the motion.
But the language does say, as you said, it does address suspension of rules, but it also does say, and the rules may be amended in a similar fashion if such an amendment was introduced at the previous regular meeting of the town council, which did not take place. And so I think the alternative, the alternative that Mr. Magory was offering up is to give us time to follow our process for making changes. We have this hybrid situation and that we're introducing it tonight because as you just shared, it was shared very late in the process in terms of giving everyone an opportunity to look at the information. You give us an opportunity to review it, come back with edits if there are any, and we adopt this at our next regular meeting if it passes. So that would be my recommendation after the discussion from the town administrator. But Councilmember Lundey, I see your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor James. So I do see with respect to that suspension of rules, it does say in that last sentence, "For the purpose of this section, preliminary approval shall mean a motion and a second with a majority vote to preliminary approved amendment." So that, we can do that and at the same time, taking consideration, the recommendation of our town administration, administrator. Thank you, Mayor James.
Absolutely. And so I'm taking that also to mean that it does still require a supermajority vote as well in order to move forward. Is that not correct, Mr. Magory?
Yeah. Off, off the top of my head, and again, I don't report to be an expert in these rules at this early stage in my tenure here, but it does read that the preliminary approval can be a majority vote in that last sentence, but that then the final approval would be a supermajority vote. So that was my, that would be my, my brief interpretation of this. But again, I'd be interested in, several of us have had telephone conversations with the town attorney today on different interpretations of things, and it would be helpful to have some, some guidance on that. And if those rules were, were sent to me, I don't, I don't recall receiving them. And I'll just push send and receive here, see if anything came through. But irrespective of that, it's the council's rules.
Yep.
But again, I'm used to the legislative deliberative process where everybody has in writing what's being considered for a vote and, and moving forward that way. I'll just make one other observation, if I may. My read of this, of the language that I saw up on the screen was that it is eliminating the requirement to have the council at the dais in order to vote. So this wouldn't be a suspension of the rules for some specific period. This would be a permanent removal of the requirement that council members be present to vote. Now that is, I think, unusual in many, many legislative bodies, particularly in small-town governments. And I did do a little survey among my colleagues in the Maryland City Management Association today about another matter, that is, how fast are they opening up and are they meeting in person? And a majority of those are already meeting in person. I have not had a chance to collate those data and I will provide them in writing to the council when I've done so. But I do think a permanent change to eliminate the requirement to meet in person could mean that you have non-residents living in another state, in another country, and continuing to participate and vote in your meetings. And, and I've dealt with other jurisdictions where they've had a very challenging time trying to determine whether or not people actually resided still in the, in the district in which they're supposed to reside while performing the function of a legislator. So there are some other challenges that that could invoke, whereas a rule change that would allow this under certain terms and conditions might improve the motion to give it some specificity, for example, as now under the state of emergency. And, and I haven't read through the virtual meeting requirements, but on its face, I would. And I haven't read through the virtual meeting requirements, but on its face, I wouldn't see any objection to what I heard as the narrative on the first read-through. They seem to make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Magory. Councilmember Mendoza, you had a comment?
Yeah, but I thought one of the options was, right now, we let the town administrator handle it. And then, why couldn't we just do that? And while we studied the one of the bills, and then we can move forward on the thing?
I mean, that is on the table, but what our colleagues are also suggesting is that we do a preliminary vote and then come back after people have had time to investigate it and then do a more formal vote. Yeah. I don't think it's necessary.
I don't see what the rush is if we have an alternative where the town administrator can say, okay, we'll have hybrid. Or, you know, people say, I don't feel comfortable, and then he decides, okay, let's do that, which is fine, because anything we make could be turned into permanent. And then, you know, there's ramifications for that. Like you say, you know, I could be living in Chevrolet and voting in Bladensburg.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember. So we do still have the motion on the floor, which was made by Councilmember Rout to adopt the changes that she read through previously. And again, per our rules, this is a preliminary vote. Thank you, Councilmember Lundie, for pointing that out. Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Councilmember Blunt, we've had discussion, so I'll move it to a vote.
No, I have a follow-up, Mayor James.
By the saying of "I."
Mayor James, I have a follow-up. I have a follow-up discussion.
Yes, but we're running short on time, so we do have to move along. I'm sorry, Councilmember Rout.
Point of order.
The vote is on the floor.
You have to follow discussion.
All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
Mayor James, you have to take discussion. You called for it. You can't just skip over it. Per Robert's Rules of Order, version 11. Do you have that version in front of you?
Thank you for that, Councilmember, but also for the sake of time, we did the discussion prior to, and that's what I referenced, that we did just have discussion for about 17 minutes. However, I will be courteous and allow you to provide clarification before we move to the vote. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor James. I would like to amend too, because I do appreciate what Town Administrator Magory pointed out. So I wanted to amend C, to read, "Members must be present at the council chamber dais in person or virtual meeting to vote." So that allows for a hybrid model. So I would like to amend. So I move to amend the motion on the floor that would include C, and I will send this out to Town Administrator Magory to be inclusive of the hybrid model that is presently working and taking place, to read C, "Members must be present at the council chamber dais in person or virtual meeting to vote. Proxy or absentee voting is not permitted."
All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
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 Any nays? Nay? Councilmember Mendoza, are you an "I" or a "nay"? All right, the "I's" have the preliminary adjustment. For the sake of roll call, for the minutes, we have Councilmember Lundie, Blunt, and Rout as "I's." And for the nays, we have Councilmember Mendoza and Mayor James as nays. Okay? Now, moving on with our agenda, I want to thank you all for that hearty discussion. Under Old Business, we do have a few items that we have to get through. First, starting with FY21 Community Grants, which was deferred from the June 14 meeting. Town Administrator Magory, I'd like to turn it over to you for this, please.
And Councilmember Blunt, I can turn this over to you since you were the other half of the subcommittee, and I know I'd rather have you take some time talking than have me do more.
No, no, you can. Can you hear me, Magory? Bob? Can you hear? No. You, you, you. Can you hear? Can you hear me? No. When we talked earlier, I don't have my papers in front of me, but I do know that you did approve some, but I wanted you to explain, please. Because I don't have my papers in front of me.
Okay, very good. I'll just read from notes that I sent out. And again, as was noted, we had a lot of moving parts on the agenda and the preparation this weekend and today, so I apologize if this didn't get out sooner. Councilmember Blunt and I met as the review committee. We made the observation, the town, thanks to the treasurer's clarification, has some extra funds in this budget line item, and we are recommending the approval of all four applicants for the amounts up to $2,000 each, for a total maximum up to $8,000, contingent upon verification that each applicant is a business in good standing with the state of Maryland as per the grant documents. So that was, I think, the conclusion we had reached, Councilmember. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So just, yep. Is there a motion to approve the four organizations for $2,000 for the FY21 Community Grant?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Mendoza. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
"I."
Any nays?
There was discussion.
I have a discussion. I'm sorry, Mayor James.
Sorry, there's a delay, so let me come, Lundie.
I raised my hand. Okay. I know, I hear that delay too, so I'm sorry. I raised my hand. So I just don't recall who the four recipients are. Would you mind sharing?
Councilmember Blunt, do you want to share the four organizations, just as a reminder?
Like I said, I did not bring my papers in front of me, but I do know, just too, because I don't have my paper, I thought Bob was going to finish out, but I know it was "Me by Example," and Time Harvest, and it's two other more organizations. I think you all might be aware of them already anyways, but Bob, do you have the other two, please? I don't have my paperwork in front of me, because I thought he was going to leave.
I'll pull it up, but if we could circle back to that, I'm happy to.
No problem.
Okay, so Councilmember Blunt, Town Administrator Magory is pulling up the list with the other two organizations. So for the sake of time, while he's pulling that up, we'll move ahead to the FY21 discretionary funds. And this was a follow-up. We did vote at the June 14 meeting for all council members' remaining discretionary funds to be allocated accordingly. Was there a specific ask, Mr. Magory?
Yeah, so in my notes, I just requested that if council members have not already done so, I'm trying to put together a spreadsheet that spells out specifically the names and associated amounts that went from each council member to each beneficiary organization. I think there was a correction from one of the council members for a misstatement that was made during the June budget meeting. And so other than that, I would accommodate, you know, any of those corrections, but I just want to have clear tracking of the public funds from the council discretionary funds to a specific recipient or beneficiary, and then the dollar amounts associated with that, so that we can provide that for audit purposes.
Perfect. So we will work to get that email to you. But Councilmember Blunt, while Mr. Magory is pulling up the other two organizations from the previous item, do you mind just sharing with the council what that correction was that you wanted to make for your discretionary funds?
Yes, I made a mistake in the name of one of the, I'm remembering, it was not to go to the B5, but to go to, was it Collinsia? She has an organization, Artistry Empowerment. And I think we gave her money before, and Vito found that in the books when he was looking. So I did make, it's not going to be five. It was not going to them. It's going to Artistry Empowerment.
Councilmember, that name does ring a bell. I think you're right. Artistic empowerment is, I think you're right, that's the name. Yep. Okay. And then, I'm sure Mr. Magory already has it, but if you haven't already, can you just email that to him as a reminder, so when he follows up, he can add it into that tracking sheet? Thank you so much. And Mr. Magory, I'll keep going if you need another minute.
I think I have the four names.
Okay. So we're coming back, everyone, to Agenda Item FY21 Community Grants.
So the four applicants are End Time Harvest Ministries, "We Lead by Example," Incarcerated Males and Females, Inc., and the Coalition for Public Safety Training in Schools.
Great, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And so Councilmember Lundie, are you good? I'm just looking at the screen. I know it's a little delayed. You had asked the question about the four organizations. Okay. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
"I."
Any nays? The "I's" have it. Thank you all so much. On the legislative agenda recap, I had asked Mr. Magory to circulate that to everyone, not for decisions tonight, but just if you could please take some time over the August recess to review and be prepared at the September work session for us to have a discussion about what needs to be changed or updated based on what we accomplished this past year and so we can move forward. So wanted to just make sure that we didn't lose sight of that. Last year, we were really good about getting it approved in July, and I don't anticipate tons of changes, so I think we'll still be okay once we come back in September to be able to have a more robust discussion about what we'd like our priorities to be for the upcoming legislative session. So that was basically on the legislative recap. I want to move over to the MML 2021 Summer Conference recap because I know Mr. Magory attended along with two of our new council members, Councilmember Blunt as well as Councilmember Rout. So we have three minutes here on the agenda, and just wanted to see if you all could just share a few highlights. I'll start with Councilmember Blunt, go to Councilmember Rout, and then come back to Mr. Magory.
Okay. It was exciting. I mean, I had an opportunity. I went there to ask 15 questions of different things that I've seen since I've been a council member. I did get all 15 of those questions answered throughout the conference. I met a lot of new council members who pretty much basically are going through the same thing as the town, which is lack of constituents following the meetings or coming or having any input on town, anything. So trying to find ways to engage with the constituents, to bring in them more into how we operate as a government and not feel that the way we've been operating, pretty much. I learned some pretty cool, I mean, some pretty nice things, but I would do a follow-up as I engage in the different things that I learned throughout being on the council. So again, you'll be seeing a lot of engagements because that's how you get to know your town by engaging, and the residents, trying to get them more involved in the town so that we know what they want, I mean, what constituents want, how we react with our constituents, and how we can serve and better govern Bladensburg. I would do my lunches with the town administrator. That was you.
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. We appreciate that and glad you got a lot out of attending the event. Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. I too attended the MML conference, and it was a breath of fresh air to be able to also speak to municipalities who were similar in size from other jurisdictions, other counties. And then we are a lot alike. I particularly, the light bulb went off in my head. I sort of have this little joke that sometimes that light bulb has to just click as it relates to the town structure and that we are a mayor, council, former government mixed with a weak mayor. So we have a little hybrid situation going on, and it was told to us before in individual trainings when we first oriented ourselves to the council with our previous administrator, but it was made very, very clear with examples and that the mayor, per our charter, leads our ceremonial purposes and in addition, leads in our state of emergency. In addition to, it just talked about how the council, and so people think that the mayor is a figurehead or is like Mayor Bowser, where that's like a strong mayor situation. And so it was just good to listen to other municipalities. There were some caucus groups that were formed, which creates the opportunity for support of council members. I just regret not being able to go there, you know, last year's and have it. Lastly, I was able to speak with our governor on a couple of my concerns. I actually had breakfast with him, which was very, very prestige, and I wanted to highlight that. That was definitely a highlight. And we discussed the mask mandate, which was motivating me to bring forth that tonight because he did remind me that because he just has a mask mandate before, because, but different municipalities look different. And so I'm just, you know, really Bladensburg proud to continue to represent us, met a lot of cool people, and I'm looking forward to caucusing with them and getting support from them for our future presentations. Thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. Magory?
I'll be extremely brief. I was just gratified that council members attended, and I'll rattle off some of these sessions. First-time attendees, consensus and team building, structure of government, employment issues, effective meetings, small-town meeting, and more events were attended, as you've just heard. I was also pleased that all three council members were signed up to join their existing colleagues in being participants in the Academy for Excellence in Local Government Leadership, which is a fantastic program. And I'd just make a little plug that even if you went to the in-person session in Ocean City, you could also still participate in the virtual session coming up, and there's some more fabulous ones, including Ethics. And I know Councilmember Lundie has signed up for that series of sessions as well, so we'd be happy to facilitate that if anybody's interested. Thank you and bravo. Appreciate your participation.
Great, thank you for that recap, Mr. Magory. At this time, that completes our old business, and we're now moving down into new business. So beginning with appointment of the acting town clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a heads-up with regard to the item upcoming on the legislative agenda for the open meeting. The Charter and Code specifically describe responsibilities by title to the town clerk, particularly about signing ordinances and assisting with elections. So to facilitate that, given that the clerk position has been formally vacant for more than a year, and there was a temporary person in there, but I think it's important to have someone empowered to fill out those mandates of the Charter and the Code. So I'm asking for a motion during the open meeting to grant that authority either to the town administrator or to another person that the town council would choose. Since that's listed in your personnel manual as being a department head position, it can fall under the provisions of the Charter. And specifically, the motion does request that it be, anytime the town clerk is vacant, the default would be to revert to the then-town administrator by title, so that it wouldn't have to be, whether it's Bob Magory or some successor in title, that vacancy is automatically covered. So that's all I have on that.
Great, thank you. And I did just check. I see it is on the agenda, everyone, for the council meeting. So once the motion goes forward, if there's any discussion for the sake of time, I'll take that discussion at that time. The next item gets us back to town elections. We discussed noncitizen voting previously, but I believe Councilmember Lundie had a resolution. Councilmember Lundie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. I do have a resolution that I am introducing today for our upcoming town elections for 2021, with the hopes of moving forward that this would be continued moving forward as a discussion item and something that would be carried over as an amendment to our town's charter. So the town of Bladensburg, Resolution 022021, Resolution to Extend the Voting Hours on Election Day 2021, whereas Article 3 of the Charter of the Town of Bladensburg describes the conduct of registration and elections. of registration and elections, and whereas pursuant to Article III of the Charter of the town of Bladensburg, the mayor and council have the power to employ such officers and employees as it deems necessary to execute the powers and duties provided by the charter or other state laws and to operate the town government. And whereas the Charter, Section 311, requires the board of supervisors of elections to keep the voting polls open from 7:00 a.m., and if we have correct that typo, to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. And whereas the Charter, Section 311, allows the council or board to require longer hours, and whereas increasing the hours the voting polls are open would increase voter access. Now therefore be it resolved that the council extend the hours that the polls will be open for the town elections, excuse me, of October the 4th, 2021, by one hour from the current 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to new hours, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And, and be it further resolved that this resolution will take effect on October 1st, 2021, and remain in effect until October 31st, 2021. Passed this 12th day of July 2021, approved by Resolution of the Town Council and the town of Bladensburg, Maryland. Attest, Robin Lordby, well, he has here acting town clerk, but you know, town administrator or what have you, and the mayor and council of the town of Bladensburg by Tekeisha James, mayor. And so this is my resolution I'm introducing for council, mayor and council consideration. Thank you for a motion to be made.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I do see this is also on the agenda for the council meeting, so we're now at 6:56, and we do have to start our next meeting at 7:00. So at this point, I just want to look down the agenda. I know Brick is also on the council meeting along with the next resolution from Councilmember Rout that is also there, so perhaps we can take the discussion there. I'm just trying to look quickly to see if there's any item not on the council meeting agenda. Help me out, Mr. Magory, that needs to be discussed in the next few minutes. Looks like telephone plan is also on there for employees. American Rescue, yes, that's on there as well, as well as August recess. So I think this is a good place to take a break, so we can come back right at the top of the hour in about two and a half, three minutes and resume our discussion and town business. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn today's work session.
A move.
Round.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We'll pause and come back for the council meeting in just a few minutes. Thank you all. We're adjourned.